For Tuesday, February 14th. First item on our agenda this evening is roll call.
Rosado? Beck?
Here.
Connolly? Chansett?
Here.
Salfa?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Yor?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
Vogelsinger?
Here.
Okay, we have 11.
Reminder for anybody that comes up to speak tonight, just adjust the microphone at the podium so we can make sure we get you on the recording. As long as you can hear yourself in the room, you know that you're being broadcast. Item three would be items to be removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything for this evening?
No.
Okay. And then item four would be matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Is there anybody here for anything not on the agenda tonight? Okay, we'll move right into the consent agenda then. Alderman Chansett?
Indeed, tonight's consent agenda reads as follows. Resolution 23-24-R authorizing purchase of spider crane for the wastewater treatment plant from Spirely lifting solutions for $93,200. Resolution 23-25-R authorizing task order 30 with RJN Group for construction engineering services for the Randall Road List Station not to exceed $78,300. Resolution 23-30-R authorizing execution of an amended task order 23 with Engineering Enterprises for construction engineering services related to the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation. Ordinance 23-03 declaring surplus property electric transformers. Ordinance 23-06 amending 2023 wage and salary ordinance. Resolution 23-28-R authorizing execution of contract with V3 Construction Group LCD for the 2023-2025 maintenance of naturalized areas. Resolution 23-23-R authorizing execution of a one-year renewable contract with a management for the 2023 West Side Property Management not to exceed $93,549.88. Resolution 23-31-R authorizing execution of task order number three with V3 Companies, LCD for safe routes to school, project land surveying, and concept engineering. Resolution 23-32-R abating $398,800 for the tax here-to-for levy for the tax year 2022 to pay debt service on $9,120,000 in GO bonds. That was the redefining series 2013, City of Batavia, Kane, and DuPage Counties, Illinois. Resolution 23-33-R abating $1,491,850 per tax here-to-for levy for the tax year 2022 to pay debt service on $22,570,000 in GO bonds refunding series 2015, City of Batavia, Kane, and DuPage County, Illinois. Resolution 23-34-R abating $411,206.26 for tax here-to-for levy for the tax year 2022 to pay debt service on $6 million in GO bonds series 2017 for City of Batavia, Kane, and DuPage County, Illinois. Resolution 23-35-R abating $694,400 for the tax here-to-for levy for the tax year 2023 to pay debt service on $3,195,000 in GO bonds refunding series 2019 of City of Batavia, Kane, and DuPage County, Illinois. Resolution 23-36-R abating $258,400 for the tax here-to-for levy for the tax year 2022 to pay debt service on $4 million in GO bonds series 2020, City of Batavia, Kane, and DuPage County, Illinois. Resolution 23-38-R authorization to execute settlement agreement and release of all claims between Williams Brothers Construction, Inc., and the City of Batavia. I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Motion by Chansett, second by Salfa. Just because this was a giant consent agenda, does anybody have any questions or any comments on any of the things we had on there? Are we all good on that?
I would certainly make the remark that I like that some of these very not controversial items are going here. It is going to certainly help streamline some of the meetings.
Roll call, please.
Chansett?
Aye.
Salfa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller? Rosado? Beck?
Aye.
Connolly? Motion carried, 11.
Thank you. All right, up next, we'll need to open a public hearing for the revocation of a conditional use granted by ordinance 16-67 per 5.404(c) of the Batavia zoning code. So I'd like to open the public hearing now.
Miller joined at 7:06.
So this is the public hearing for testimony and the revocation of a conditional use granted by ordinance 16-67. Drew, do you want to start us off, give us a little background?
Sure. As noted in the staff report, with ordinance 1667, the City of Batavia did grant a conditional use with plan development for the Crash Champions use at 2080 Main Street. There was also an action at that time to rezone the property to place it in a zoning district in order to allow the use of heavy vehicle services at this location. In that ordinance, there was specifically a condition of approval that required that all vehicles awaiting repair or completion of repair be either within the building or within a solid fenced area that was included with the plans. Also, as I noted in the report, condition seven of the ordinance also explicitly said, although it's also in the zoning code, that violations of the term of the conditional use could cause for the city to revoke, or initiate a proceeding to revoke the conditional use. I outlined in the staff report chronology, but essentially, in January of last year, staff identified several inoperable or damaged unlicensed vehicles being stored both on subject property and the property adjacent to this property. We did send a certified letter to the tenant and ownership advising of the violation and a time to remedy it. That was remedied. However, later on, we did observe other instances. September 29th and December 2nd were noted in the staff report where, again, violations were occurring. It had some compliance, again, after the September violation, but by December, things were growing in terms of the number of vehicles on this location that were damaged, destroyed, or not properly licensed. After December 2nd, we did inform the staff on site that they needed to remedy the situation by December 5th. And on that day, we were informed by the police department that a vehicle was placed in the westbound lane to Main Street allegedly from the site and allegedly to bring the site into compliance by removing a vehicle from the site. On December 7th, we requested an action plan be provided as to how the site would be addressed. And we did not receive any communication regarding that request. So at that point, we did feel the need to initiate proceedings to start the revocation process. And as I noted in the staff report, there's three findings for revocation. First, what is the use to be revoked? We're requesting revocation of the conditional use for heavy vehicle service use granted by ordinance 1667. The property that applies to is 2080 Main Street. Pins are provided, as well as legal description in the staff report. And the reasons for revocation, as I noted, violations of condition two of the ordinance, as well as related to condition seven. We did provide notice as required by code. I have the return receipts for the record that we can enter into the record, as well as certificates of publication and service verifying that all required notices were met. With the conditional use revocation, you do have to find that one or more violations of the conditional use have been violated. And in that case, that is instance A of the finding of fact. In regards to the situation, staff was in contact with corporate counsel for Crash Champions today. They have provided an action plan that can provide the counsel to print copies, but staff has not had an opportunity to review that at this point. We do recommend opening and conducting the hearing tonight, taking any testimony, and then subsequently closing the hearing. We do also recommend that if, failing any mitigating circumstances be found through the testimony tonight, that the city council take action to revoke conditional use 1667. And we have prepared ordinance 2304 that would revoke that conditional use for your consideration
Does anybody on the council have any questions? Drew just went over. I've kind of watched this from the sidelines of what's been going on out there, and it's really ridiculous to me that we've got a business that won't apply the rules that were given to them over a year's time and then thinks it's okay to throw that back in the city's face and drop a vehicle on public street. I think that's just ridiculous. So I would be 100% in support of revoking this. I believe that, you know, they've had a year to try to remedy this, and they've done virtually nothing. And it's constant. It's not just the six dates that are on here. It's almost every week, there's, you know, cars that just sit out there, off their property, on their property, that are non-functional and all of that. I mean, I sat right here when we approved that, and we told them that they all had to be back inside the fence at the end of the day. That was the reality of it, is that's what had to happen. And obviously, they don't believe that. So, where I'm at on this. Mark?
Yeah, I mean, it's a shame. Obviously, the company's doing well enough to have a lot of vehicles to repair, but nothing has been done to address it. And then, unfortunately, the action of taking that car and putting it on West Main, I mean, that kind of pushes me over the edge, that it's like, had there been discussion, had there been something that was like, hey, yeah, we're sorry, we're going to try and remediate this and figure out a way, you know, off-site storage, whatever it is, but there's been nothing that's been done to address the issue, given the timeframe you've given them. So I'm with you, Alan, on this, that it stinks, because it's obviously, it's good revenue for them, they're doing well, and that's an unfortunate situation. But it's not the place for that business. We kind of leaned forward and said, hey, you know, we'll do this, given you meet these conditions. And since they're not meeting the conditions, it's just not, it's a bit of a crossroads in Batavia, that it's not a great place to be having this kind of stuff. And I drove through there, and I was shocked at the number of cars out front that were obviously undrivable. So it's unfortunate, but yeah, I agree with you.
Ken, go ahead.
I wanted to reiterate, my recollection of those meetings are exactly the same. The questions about whether or not vehicles would remain in a safe spot, hidden away, if I recall the testimony from the applicant at the time, was it would be absurd to even entertain doing something like this, and here we are. So I'm very disappointed.
This is a public hearing, so if there is anybody in the audience that would like to address us tonight, they'd come up and just give us your name.
Good evening, council members. Mark Kehokey. I am corporate counsel for Crash Champions. I have with me Shane Dimmitt, who is the vice president of operations for Midwest, and Adam Lisca, assistant vice president of facilities. So I can assure you in our conversation with staff today that we are equally disappointed to be taking the city's time and use of resources for these matters that continue to go uncorrected. We do take it very seriously, and we are here tonight to provide some background, which hopefully will help you understand some of the situation and the issues that have been faced during these rather difficult times with part supply issues and other things going on in the industry. So I assure you, we do not take this lightly. If you recall, you know, nobody likes to be in front of you for being the people that are in trouble, right? So several years ago, several of you were also here then, and it was a more exciting time for us to take a rundown of all these that had been abandoned and renovate it and restore it. And we should be here talking about a success story instead of these issues that are plaguing the council and the city. But that facility was a $5.5 million investment for us. We employed 20 people there and fixed approximately 2,000 vehicles a year through that facility. So it is a success story on one hand, and we understand fully. And I was here, I was the counsel that represented Crash Champions with our owner and founder, Matt Ebert, at the time, who remains equally excited about this location and servicing this municipality. But we do want you to maybe understand some of the background. So, you know, as my ex-wife would say, communication's the root of many issues. As we started to look into this, communication became the problem. The notices weren't getting to the right people, and unfortunately, in the timeframe where it would have looked like if we took you guys seriously for what you were requesting of us, there was no response on a corporate level. And as you can understand, the location management, knowing likely the severity of the recourse, was not as transparent as we would like to see out of our local leadership. So when it came to the corporate level, obviously, we started to investigate, and we're here tonight to kind of present to you the reasons why it got to this point and why we hope you will give us a prove-up period. And we have talked to staff about that, that presenting this action plan, while it's, you know, maybe too little, too late, we did prepare that and try to get something, you know, very substantial before you, knowing that it may require modification in the upcoming days. But for that particular location, you know, insurance companies have two programs, a drivable program and a non-driveable program. The non-driveable program are the vehicles that are most concerning to probably most of the council members and the village staff. They're the heavy hit, you know, they're the ones that are most unsightly and that you want behind that fence. Clearly, all of the vehicles on our property are likely at some point in the restoration process. But, you know, the lighter hits, the drivables, they're not as unsightly. And what has happened with the limited parts availability, which is beyond our control, and we truly hope that the manufacturers and aftermarket suppliers remedy this quickly, is that many vehicles that are nearly complete are now sitting on our lot. Our business model is based off of turning cars, right? You fix it, you want the next one in, you fix it, you turn it back. And you don't want cars sitting on your lot, whether they're wrecked or a lot or a little. And so this parts availability is putting pressure on our facilities to house and store these vehicles, because sometimes it's a safety component, a rear camera, a front camera, a seatbelt, things you can't return an airbag, the vehicle, to a customer in good faith. And now those are taking up spots where non-drives would go. So had we received notice at the appropriate times during this process? And I understand, the previous manager and the village had a good relationship. And over the course of time, you know, we've been there for six, seven years now, anytime they were approached, it wasn't an issue. Yeah, 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 we'll fix it, we get it. And we understand, you know, we don't want it to happen frequently, but sometimes it does. We have peak seasons, December, you know, certainly when the weather gets bad, the accidents get more severe. And so it really sometimes is seasonally an issue, and we clearly have some management issues. But also, we've turned off the non-drive programs there. So we've told the insurance carriers, stop sending us those heavy hits, or send them to another facility, and that should have produced some instant relief in the last couple of weeks. There is also, clearly, corporate is taking this very seriously, and there will be a change in management. That's one of our flagship facilities, and we're very proud of it. You know, we're still corporate headquarters in Illinois, even though we've expanded over the years, and we take great pride in that. So the manager, while he has made some bad decisions, obviously knows how to manage a shop, and it's going to be difficult to replace, but we understand that that's going to be a necessary part of this process to prove to village council and staff that we take it seriously, we hear what you're saying. And if somebody on a local level that's not reporting things to us, especially as serious as this has gotten, and made some of the decisions, like putting a vehicle on a public right-of-way, that clearly that needs to be remedied as well. And we are 100% committed to restoring your faith in Crash Champions, and really do desire to continue to serve this community. I don't know if you gentlemen have anything to add, or if there's any questions about what we just presented, but that is some of the backdrop. And, you know, why the notices never got to us, we're still looking at that. It clearly is, you know, I received notice from our real estate investment partner who owns the properties that we lease them back from, out of California. So that's when I received notice. So we'll continue to dig into that, but every issue you've presented, we take seriously. And we are just as disappointed that we're here before you, kind of requesting that you allow us to prove to you that it can be remedied. So I'll leave it with that, and if you gentlemen want to add anything.
I guess, you know, my name's Shane Dimmitt. I would just like to add, you know, when I found out about the vehicle being, you know, moved onto the road, we did take action, we did write up the manager. It was a final notice. At that point, that's when I was fully aware of all the issues in the vehicles. So I was the one that got with the insurance companies and turned off the non-drives to try to, you know, get less vehicles on the property. I wanted to get some relief there, so we all didn't have to go through that. So.
Gentlemen, we'll be continuing to provide oversight of this facility in the near future, should you allow us the opportunity to take that time to prove up. So our request tonight, absent any questions or other things you might have for us, is that you allow us to work with staff, present the action plan, and give us a period of time to prove up and maybe postpone the vote this evening, so you have some more faith and credence in what we're saying to you tonight.
There is a subpoena for information that was submitted to you, which I believe that was submitted back in December, mid-December, which has not yet been fully complied with. And so I was, you know, just wondering why we should not take this action tonight in light of the fact that it's been two months and the subpoena has not been fully complied with.
Yeah, so I had been in touch with Detective Lieutenant LaBarbara throughout that. I was out of the office for several weeks, and I did try to keep in communication with him and let him know where we were in the process. The information was provided in part, and then follow-up information was presented to Detective Lieutenant LaBarbara. And at this point, I didn't believe there was anything additional necessary. What we were trying to do was to take the additional step to compel local manager to give the information that the subpoena was issued for without wasting additional municipal or police resource. We're able to do that.
Don't have the power to compel the local manager to provide the information?
For the other parties that were involved. So he was not willing to disclose that, and after discussions with staff, he was finally in a position where he knew, you know, that was it, like, it's time to present that information. So I did provide that information to Detective Lieutenant LaBarbara. Hopefully, I'm getting that right. And yes, so that's what we were after. We knew the information they were seeking was ultimately aimed at identifying who the other participants were. And so as a company, we were trying to compel and produce that information in addition to what was in the subpoena. So we were able to produce that name to the detective, which I felt a little better about, at least with the delay in getting the information.
Just to confirm, the same individual who was the manager at the time that the car was put into the road continues to be the local manager today?
Correct, until such time as Mr. Dimmitt can provide an appropriate replacement, but that is actively being sought out. The industry as a whole suffers from lack of qualified kind of employees, as many businesses continue to be, so.
In our materials, we noted that there continue to be violations as recently as last Monday.
All right. Where are that? That will take place within the next 14 days. So I've already maneuvered some people, so that won't be an issue going forward.
Yes, you know, in my mind, this is not just, you know, remedy your personnel problems and your management problems, but this is systemic. If you're going to do 2,000 cars a year out there, you need more space, or you need another lot to store your vehicles on. I know, I've been in automotive industry for almost 40 years, so I know exactly what you guys are going through and buy that place on an almost daily basis. So the reality to me is, you have to come up with a plan of how you're going to handle this in the future. And it's not just, we're just going to slow down what's coming in, because that's not how your business is going to survive. That's not how your business is going to thrive. You need to be able to have a place to put those vehicles that fits within what you agreed to. And at this point, I don't know that I see that. And if you have that much problem over a year's time with your management that you have there now, I have a real hard time saying, we're going to just wait and see what you guys can come up with in the next two weeks or the next month.
Well, fortunately, one of the things that, now that communication with staff has been reestablished, the City of Batavia actually owns a lot, I believe, behind the property?
Just next to it.
Just next to it. And so that may be part of the long-term solution, to begin to talk about those things with the village, and if they're willing to, or in a position to dispose of that, and how that process might work as well for a long-term solution.
Yes, immediate west.
And I guess I'll ask.
Pass his hand up.
Nick, go ahead.
Thanks, Alan. I have a question more for us and staff in that, I'm in a quandary. I don't think they've earned the right for us to be lenient at, you know, my mantra of being business-friendly as much as possible. Is there anything we can do from a financial standpoint as creating some kind of, I don't want to give them, you know, two weeks, two months, or whatever the timeframe is, and just like, okay, it didn't work out, and they're gone. There should be some kind of...
Yes. Can you tap it? It is. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, one of the things we can do is we can, you know, find them, we can cite them. Um, you know, we have been trying to cooperate with property owners as much as possible and not cite them unless we absolutely have to, but certainly that's a route and we could impose a fine as part of, you know, whatever resolution comes out of this to make sure that, you know, that there is some penalty that's associated with it and going forward that there would be, you know, similar penalties. I mean, typically the violations are $750 per day per violation. Now, if you add that up, that can be, you know, pretty onerous. So that, that is an option that we can take.
Thanks, Scott. I, I just think there, there should be some kind of restitution or some, a penalty more than just, you know, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm in between. Willing to hear anybody else's thoughts and opinions.
So so far, there's been no fines imposed ever?
We have not imposed fines, that is correct, because we've been trying to get compliance and up until September, um, you know, there was compliance happening. December is when everything really went off the rails with it. So, um, but normally we try and give people time to comply, you know, it's just, you know, try to be fair, but you know, if they don't comply, then we do, you know, issue citations, take them to adjudication.
In terms of the citations, would that be relatively easy to generate?
Oh, yeah, for sure. Yeah, we could, we could do it in a day.
And look at the dates that we have and find them for every one of them that they had.
And find them every day going forward.
They get it right until they get back into compliance.
I just have a question.
Yep.
Regarding our communications that we have with other businesses and those businesses that have a corporate office, is it our normal policy and process to reach out to the local and not to the corporate level when these types of issues come up?
Let's not answer, but I believe we do both the local and to the property owner.
Right. And in this case, because of the revocation proceedings, there is a specific list of people, entities that we have to send it to. We have to send it to the property owner, to corporate and to the local office as well as the address. So we actually did a hand delivery to this one as well as in addition to the certified notices. We did get certified notices back from all the entities that we were required to send it to, so they did receive them. But, you know, it depends on the circumstances. I mean, we try to talk to the local people first and say, hey, by the way, you know, you've got an issue here. And, you know, most of the time we get those things addressed at the local level, but if we have to get beyond that, you know, we will go and do, you know, formal notices to, you know, corporate entities and things like that if we need to.
And following the incident where the car was deposited in the road at dusk on a weekday during rush hour, um, we did reach out to the regional management as well to try to get them involved in the situation. And that too was ineffective. So it's beyond the local, right?
Right.
Correct.
I'm sorry, what was the name?
You know, the name of the person that you talked to, who was the regional manager?
Regional manager, um, I don't have it right in front of me, but I, I believe it's Adam, maybe. I, I can't remember who it was at the moment, but we did speak to somebody else who was in the real estate end of, of the, of the company.
David Goodwin.
David Goodwin?
David Goodwin.
Yes, that's it. Right.
Yes, and that is when it came to our internal attention.
So that would be December.
Right. It was right after the incident happened that I had discussion with him.
Can I just, can I add? So, you know, the police department had conversations with the gentleman's name that you just mentioned, David, on December 14th. That's when he would have been made aware.
Yes, correct. I believe that is correct. And so at that point in time, I was not aware of, and I don't know to what level anyone was truly aware of until I actually read the staff report prepared for this evening of the full scope of what had been going on at this location. And again, that rests with us. It was our duty and obligation standing before you when the conditional use was granted to abide by those terms. And we understand village staff has been more than accommodating over the years. And again, previous to this management term, there had been compliance and an open and beneficial relationship with the city and compliance. You know, my continued apologies for the time we took tonight and the resources we've used from both the police department, your village staff and your time. So can't say it enough, the people that need to be aware of it are aware of it. We didn't make a $5.5 million investment in Batavia lately. And we understand that you also have duties and obligations as a council to uphold the orderly flow of traffic and through that facility. But one of the things that I would maybe like to remind everyone and maybe it will garner some goodwill is that when we entered that property for redevelopment, there were a gambit of problems associated with that particular shopping center. It was starting to become blighted. Uh, the master developer who controlled the association had gone out of business and bankrupt. And at that time, and part of the conditional use process and moving on through development, Crash Champions took upon themselves to spend $75,000 on new monument signs and $150,000 repaving and improving the internal roads that weren't just for the benefit of Crash Champions and putting the association back in order and making sure the light bills that were passed due for those signs were paid back to the city of Batavia. And that was all on Crash Champions dime to kind of get things going, get off on the right foot. Um, and so that's the type of company we are. We want to stand behind our word. Again, I get that people are disappointed and maybe at the point where we don't have much credibility up here, but I can assure you, the people that need the attention, you have the attention of the people that you need. And we will continue to work with staff. Um, you know, we had a great relationship with Scott and at the time, uh, the gentleman who retired, Joel Strausman. Um, and we will continue open communications to explore that lot, um, to explore other opportunities on the site for additional screening. And I can go on till I'm blue in the face, but I really just implore you, our request is to give us additional time to prove up now that things have gotten to where they need to be within our organization. And we will continue to check with you on a corporate level throughout this process and you not have to chase us because we want to make sure it's remedied long-term so we can feel comfortable that everything in place at this facility will not put us back here again because we ultimately know clearly if you do give us, uh, you know, the gracious approval of postponing the vote, that there's not another request to be made in the future.
Mark?
Yeah, I appreciate the reminder on the improvement you did make on that property because I remember the, talking about the signage and everything and you guys did, remembering now that you guys put that investment in there. How long do you think it's going to take you, I mean, before like you find a place for the vehicles and stuff? I mean, I don't want to say, yeah, hey, let's postpone the vote and then that we're back here, you know, a month from now and nothing's been done. Obviously the management's going to change very soon, but the, the issue at hand is all those vehicles and when's that going to be remedied if we were to delay?
Yeah, so for the, the time being, the suspension of the non-drive programs will really produce a long-term result. You know, we want you guys to know we're serious. A business doesn't take the decision lightly to decrease its revenue stream, right? So we knew where you guys were at and we made the decision to decrease the revenue stream to get this on parity level so we can move forward. And we will monitor that closely moving forward. The vacant city lot was something that I recollected from the time of our original development. And it's good to hear that it's still for sale and available. I assumed it would be and is likely a viable source for a long-term solution to that problem. And also probably hopefully a benefit to the city as well. But there's certainly other things that we've been working on internally with additional screening, maybe with some organic material, shrubbery, et cetera, that we'll take care of. So the issue you guys also have is that we can't really control or prevent vehicles from being dropped overnight that are in any type of various conditions. What we're trying to do is process through our tow providers that this is the procedure. You drop them here and in the morning they get moved. If we can create some type of berm or shrubbery on a part of the property where they drop them and they're shielded until we get to them, that may, you know, kind of go with what the city is looking for ultimately as well. So we're trying to address all the potential problems at one time. I think the conversations with the city, um, the cost analysis and stuff can move forward pretty quickly. And so I would say, you know, within a month's time, we can certainly work out the financial feasibility of that and some type of plan to present to staff and get support or present our alternative ideas within the site to see if staff would back those for presentment to you. But management will obviously immediately change and that will, we want somebody that's going to work with you guys, you know, we do. Those were some bad decisions made. It's not what we expect out of leadership.
He brought up a good point when there are vehicles that are dropped, um, you know, because crashes happen after service. I mean, is that something that's acceptable? Cause I know that one location that I pass all the time has vehicles, crashed vehicles out all the time. So.
That, that frankly has been the least of our worries. It's been the ones that are there for days and weeks at a time. I mean, we, you know, we understand and we, you know, we've been working with them on this facility for six years now and, you know, once in a while there's a car, we're not sitting there, you know, you got a car, gotcha kind of thing. That's, you know, we get it, you know, that that's going to happen and, you know, move the car the next day. These are cars that have been sitting there for days and weeks on end, not moving. That's the issue we've had.
Out there, they're damaged and then the plates go off of them and they're there waiting to get scrapped, whatever it is, waiting for the insurance company to pay out. I don't know, but they just sit there for a week or two. That's the ones I think that are the root of the issue. It's not one that gets dropped the night before and then gets rolled in to get looked at the next day.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Dan, you have your hand up?
Indeed. What I heard from the beginning here is that there are, there's definitely processes that are broken. I recognize the huge commitment that was made at the beginning, the large improvements that have been made. I've worked for organizations that have made systemic errors. It sounds like we got their attention. I'm not saying that I think that this is over, but I do believe that we certainly, uh, we're on the same page as far as this doesn't fly. This cannot happen again. And, um, we are in touch with the right people to make sure that the processes that need to be fixed are fixed. I am confident that this management group will do that. And so I'm, I believe I've heard all I need to hear. I have confidence that this organization will fix this and take this seriously.
Tony?
Yeah, I agree with Dan, but also with Nick, you know, there, there should be some restitution. I think that, you know, the fines for the violations that have been happening and moving forward. And, you know, I would say table for now that this, um, the action that is just next on the agenda to revisit if we find out that things aren't improved.
Second.
I can, I can agree with that because I think that, you know, the investment that they've got there, the business that they do have going through that is a good business. And, you know, I think that they get one opportunity and it's going to be, I mean, I'll be watching them like a hawk. So I just don't want to see this continue and I hope you're truly serious about remedying the situation and, and not going back at all. There's a lot of ways things can be done. I mean, like I said, I've worked in shop for 37 years and we just don't do anything like that. I mean, we keep everything clean. And I've had discussions with other businesses that have been in here about the same type of things and we just will not allow that in Batavia.
Hear it. And, uh, we understand completely how we got to this point. And, uh, you know, unfortunately, if we're not serious about it, you'll probably be hearing from a different lawyer next time we're in front of you. So, uh, thank you for your time and we really do take it seriously.
I know, Tony, I think you made a motion to table it or.
That's the next item. That items were.
Yeah, when we get to that, well, I think that's what we'll do with it. I think we'll table it. I think we're going to give you 30 days, you know, one month and, you know.
If I may, so from the procedure standpoint, we have a public hearing that's open right now. So we can table the public hearing, not composite for 30 days. We'll come back at the, whatever 30 days is at the next committee of the hall and get a report back for you. We'll table the, uh, the ordinance though, obviously because we want to take action.
Okay.
And if we table the public hearing.
Continue, actually.
Continue the public hearing.
Continue the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. L.A. and Yor. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Yor.
Aye.
Serum.
Aye.
Vogel singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado. Beck.
Aye.
Connolly. Chanset.
Aye.
Safa.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Okay. Can you? Carried 12-0.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Look forward to hearing from you. On to item number seven, which is ordinance 2304, revocation of conditional use, ordinance 1667 for Crash Champions, 2080 Main Street. And we're going to table that one.
Correct.
Okay. So that will be tabled. And then we will move on to item number eight, which is an approval of a Class A liquor license for Puzzled Minds Batavia LLC, doing business as JT's Tavern and Tap, 113 South Batavia Avenue.
Never thought I'd be here on this. The Batavia Police Department completed a background check and investigation to determine whether JT's Tavern and Tap, which is located at 113 South Batavia Avenue, and the owners and managers Jeremy, Robert and Justin Truex might be suitable to receive a liquor license in the city of Batavia. All required documents have been submitted by the business and we have found no issues with which would preclude the business or owner from receiving a Class A tavern liquor license once the certified occupancy has been issued by the city. And I would ask that this be placed on the regular agenda for the joint committee of the hall on Tuesday, February 14th, which it is today, and a full city council Monday, February 20th. And then also we do have Jeremy, Robert and Justin here. If you have any questions for them about their business, I think maybe there might be a few words that you guys want to say as well. Now is now, okay?
Yes, now is, now is fine.
Good evening. I don't want to take up too much of your time. It's, uh, it's Valentine's Day. I'm sure you guys have other plans other than this, but, uh, my name is Jeremy. My father, Robert, and Justin, my brother. We, just small background, we own, uh, two restaurants and bars, one in Lombard, one in Carroll Stream, JT's Porch Saloon and Eatery off of 355 and Roosevelt Road, and JT's Corner Tap and Eatery off of Lyse Road in Carroll Stream. In total, we've been in business almost 12 years. It's been a family-owned business for that entire time. We came across what used to be called the Full Moon. I'm sure all of you guys are aware of the Full Moon, whether you've, uh, went into the restaurant or not to drink and eat, or whether you've drove past the. or not to drink and eat, or whether you've drove past the, the blue building, which I'm sure all of you guys have. Came across the building, thought it was a great opportunity to revitalize a building that's been in the community for, I think the date on it was 1890 or something it was built. So we, we got the opportunity and thought it would be a great, a great third location to, to expand our business and our model. It's a little bit different than what we've done in the past. It's a much smaller location than we're used to, but given how busy the other two locations are, it's kind of a welcome step down as the, for the, for the third acquisition. So just wanted to come in, introduce ourselves, put a face with the name and just answer any questions you guys may have about our business, what we bring to Batavia, what we hope to bring to Batavia in the future, so.
Yeah, so this is in my ward. Sure you're, you tongue in cheek kind of mentioned that we all know about it. And so I guess there's challenges to be addressed there. Now, it seems I have not been to your other establishments. So what is it, what is your outlook on it? Again, not knowing your other establishments, what are you, what are you trying to do there that is going to potentially address what we've seen in the past?
Sure. So I, I would assume you guys are all aware of the problems that, that Batavia has faced with that place over a number of years. From what we've heard, just talking with people in the community, what I've heard from friends and, and whatnot that have been into the place before is just an absentee of management, an absentee of ownership, and that's not how we run our businesses. We, and I would say we, all three of us, work 70 hours a week plus. I'd say my dad probably works a little bit more than 70 hours a week. And we, we take what we do very seriously. There's a responsibility involved when you run a restaurant and bar. It's not a easy industry to be in. So in order to be successful, you have to be there. And that's, that's the bottom line, basically. And we've, we've heard that over the course of the however, however long, 2004, I believe it turned into the full moon, that, that, that ownership was there at the beginning, kind of fell off, and then there was just a complete absentee of, of ownership. Staff basically did what they wanted and they were, without witnessing it directly, they were a lot of the problem. I don't necessarily think that Dave was the whole issue. I just think he wasn't, he wasn't there and the people that he had in the building were not, were not good. We are not the full moon. We are JT's management group and what we do is run successful restaurants and bars. This restaurant will have a small kitchen. We're known for burgers, wings, some of our appetizers. You can ask around and everyone will talk about our chicken wings and our burgers. And that's what we hope to bring to Batavia. But I think the, the real issue with the fights and the drugs and the this and the that, I mean, it just, you're using city resources for, for stuff that doesn't need to be taking place. And whether that means us, you know, closing early for the first six months to deter that type of clientele, we have no problem doing that. We're in it for the long haul. We're making a substantial investment in the building. We've purchased the building and the property. So we're not just in it to rent a space and go out of business. That's not our, our mantra. So yeah, without continuing to ramble on and on, that's some of the stuff we're doing. I'm sure I've missed quite a bit, but I kind of think I hit the meat and potatoes there.
Yeah, I appreciate that. You have a lot of passionate neighbors that are passionate about their quarter.
And we've, we've talked to almost every single one already.
And they're, they're looking to revitalize that area and continue to grow it. I mean, there's been some new things coming in there and they're, this is, this is an opportunity in that area. So I wish you best luck and I like what I hear. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Hopefully nobody likes the big blue thing on the side of the building because that's going to, that's going to go away unfortunately, guys. Sorry.
We're okay with that.
But there's a very nice brick underneath it from what I'm being told, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
What do you anticipate your hours being?
11 o'clock till, I don't, I believe the liquor licenses is one and two o'clock in the city of Batavia. We tend to not stay open past, past two o'clock on Fridays and Saturdays. We usually close at midnight on Sundays, Monday through Thursdays, usually one o'clock or when business slows. Kitchen hours will be 11 o'clock. We hope to draw lunch business, takeout business, that type of thing. So we will be open for lunch and kitchen hours would probably be until 10 or 11 o'clock and then we usually do some type of a late night menu of cheese curds and fried food and stuff for people that are hungry that come in a little bit later.
Will you be open on Mondays?
I'll be open up on Mondays, yes.
Okay, that's good.
All right.
Ask you for a friend, Monday meetings.
All right. We'll see you Monday.
Nick, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Alan. I just, he already responded well to Mark, but I was just going to add that I grew up in Lombard, have strong roots there and have spent enough time at JT's Porch to, to be a qualified supporter of this.
We appreciate your business.
And yeah, and the reputation, the food is good and the reputation is good there. So I am excited that they're coming here and I'm confident that they will give that addiction to our Dunkin'.
Sarah?
One more. I grew up right by Nick and when I saw that it was JT's Tavern, I was hoping it was the one in Lombard that I was going to be affiliated with that. Your burgers are fantastic and you run a very nice establishment. So I think it'll be a wonderful, wonderful turn of events over there at the old full moon.
Certainly not trying to reinvent the wheel. You know, we're firm believers that, that there should be an old school tavern in every city. We're not going to try and, and change that. You'll notice a lot of the stuff, you know, is kept the same, including the old 1950s solid mahogany back bar that's there. We're obviously going to make it safer and not smell as bad. That's a plus, but we're, we're going to keep those, those characteristics that make it what it is, so.
The smell will be good, but there's a couch that's been down on the basement since the 90s that you might want to be very careful with.
We might need your help moving.
I'd be happy to go down there for lunch after 30 years of not being able to go there for lunch.
Yeah, we, we've heard a lot. We've, we've had people from Batavia come into, to both locations and say how excited they were that we were going to be in industry and I think, or in the, in Batavia and I think the number one question is, are you bringing your wings with you? And, and yes, yes, we are. So.
Excellent. Well, we look forward to you guys.
Yeah, we appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
Okay.
We need a motion here to move, move.
Yes, we do.
Move the approval to city council with a positive recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Malley, second by Yur. Roll call, please.
Malley?
Aye.
Yur?
Aye.
Serome?
Aye.
Vogel singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly? Chanset?
Aye.
Safa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Motion carried 12-0.
Alan?
Yes?
I'd like to welcome Abby to the voting. So nice to have you here.
Thanks. Glad to be back.
We can even put stuff on the consent agenda now, too. Okay, then we will move on to item number nine, which is resolution 23-29R, the Batavia Police adoption of 10 shared principles. Chief? This is one of the more exciting things that I'll have an opportunity to do. I know a lot of the stuff that we bring before you is kind of mundane or it's a problem. So I hope you guys have all had a chance to read through the 10 shared principles and there's just a few comments and some, some things that I want to mention before we get into the reading of the resolution. So I guess first I'd say, I don't think it's a coincidence that on the day in which we celebrate love, we're talking about these 10 shared principles because, you know, I firmly believe when you read through these, you can tell that they're all rooted in love. So I think these principles are about showing love and compassion to, to people and that's, you know, really what our mission is at the end of the day and it's what we want our, our people doing. So as you might have read, the principles, these 10 shared principles were forged out of meetings between the N double ACP and the IL ACP back in 2018, numerous meetings over the course of almost a full year. And then this is, this is what was mutually agreed upon by, by both of these organizations and I'm pleased that we're going to be formally affirming and resolving these principles. So just to kind of highlight some of them before getting into them, obviously the, the most important thing is human life and it's to be held at the highest of value, dignity and respect of all, all people that we come in contact with and that we deal with, rejecting all discrimination, the building of trust through procedural justice and transparency, accountability. Community policing and partnerships are a huge part of this and a huge part of what I want our mission and our vision to be about. And again, supporting diversity and training are also significant pillars of, of what the 10 shared principles are. The one thing I'll say is I don't want these to be just words on paper and they're not going to be just words on paper. Again, this needs to be rooted in our culture of the organization and operationizing the principles means familiarizing all of our officers with what these principles are, what they mean, what their pillars are. And so we've begun those discussions already at the staff level and then trickling down through to our, our line level officers as well. So one of the things in reflecting on the principles as I, as I, you know, read through these, these are already ingrained in our, in our culture and already interwoven in some fashion. And I think back to, you know, even when I was hired, a lot of credit to our Board of Fire and Police Commission for the process that, you know, goes into hiring, you know, hiring our, our officers. Our background investigations are done by our officers, our detectives, who have an understanding of exactly what these, some of these principles are and what we're looking for in building the culture of our department. And then it, you know, moves to the next step with the training academies, you know, as well as our field training program, so, and probationary period as well. So we're, we're constantly, you know, have our eyes on and are vetting people who, who are hiring and who are bringing into the organization, which I think is where all of this, you know, has to start. Part of the adoption of this will be putting this into our field training program. This will be something that shows up in the manual, in the beginning of the manual and something that, you know, we're constantly touching on throughout the course of, of the career of, of every officer, including myself. So I think we've had great success with hiring, you know, high caliber people and, and so I think in a lot of sense, although we're formalizing this, we're already doing a lot of this, but again, there's room, you know, for growth, room for improvement. So, you know, really I think it's about being intentional, about valuing each principle and putting them into action. So I just wanted to mention a few of the initiatives that we're looking at doing, you know, from a community partnership standpoint, which I think are, are going to be, you know, great for our city, great for our, our department. We're looking at doing a coffee with a cop, coffee with command staff. We're going to be more involved in special events. We have kind of a revitalization with our, our charitable events such as Special Olympics. We're involved in the polar plunge, Summer Games, and there'll be other Special Olympics stuff that we're going to be involved with as well. But just, you know, having our officers getting out of the car, I think is important. Having our, our officers on bicycles, being able to stop and talk to people and educate them and show them that, you know, we're human beings, just like everybody else is. There's really nothing that's, you know, that different about us and that we care about, care about them and care about people. We're going to be looking at doing more community presentations. I know there's a lot of issues that we're dealing with in the community and, you know, one of the big ones that continuously comes up with is, you know, is like elder fraud. So we're going to partner with the state's attorney's office and, and implement some of these presentations, bringing the community together, people that are suffering from, victims of being, of some of these crimes, get them in, get them in the room with us in the state's attorney's office and educate them on, on what's going on. So really this is about building those relationships, talking with people, showing the human side of law enforcement and, you know, letting people in the community know that we truly do, do care about what their needs are and, you know, we're here, you know, to meet those needs. So one of, one of the other things that's huge, it's training and, you know, the state continuously is putting training mandates on us, most of which are very good. There's been a lot of good mandates that have come through the Safety Act. It's a lot of stuff that we've already been complying with over the years, but it's something that we can't, you know, do anything but put our foot on the accelerator and, and continue forward with doing classes like de-escalation, crisis intervention training. All of that is extremely important and, you know, we're going to continue making the training a high priority. Also in talking with our Board of Fire and Police Commission about this, because I think it's important that they're also on board with the 10 shared principles, they're going to look at some of the processes that they're using currently, questions that we ask candidates and try and integrate the 10 shared principles into, you know, more into the hiring process, which I think is great as well. And then, you know, I'll just kind of go off on a tangent. It's about us taking care of one another as well. And some of the stuff that we're looking at doing is a peer support program, which, you know, obviously we need to be healthy, our officers need to be healthy, they need to be focused on, on the job at hand and that means, you know, their mental health, their physical health. So it's, those are areas that we're going to be focusing on as well. And then obviously the goal of making the principles the formal foundation of what our mission and vision is. So I'm grateful to the staff that I have. I'm thankful to Deputy Chief Blowers and Deputy Chief Johnson, who, who came out tonight. They're a big part of this. The conversations we've had with our supervisory staff have been very positive, getting good positive feedback from our officers. A lot of these officers, especially our newer ones, are the ones that are coming to us saying, hey, what do you think about this idea? And they're all community partnership related ideas. So I'm very, very pleased with who we have working for this organization and, and looking forward to moving on with that. But also, you know, a big thank you to the mayor, city administrator, council, and really to our citizens who, who support us and trust us. And that's what this is about, is about building the trust and continuing to build those partnerships. So I'll get off my soapbox and do you want me to read the resolution or is somebody else going to do that? You want me to? Okay. Whereas on March 22nd, 2018, the NAACP Illinois State Conference and the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police agreed to 10 shared principles designed to build trust between law enforcement and communities of color. And whereas the two statewide associations vowed by mutual affirmation to work together and stand together in our communities and at the state level to implement these values and principles and to replace mistrust with mutual trust wherever, whenever and however we can. Now be it therefore resolved that the Batavia, Illinois Police Department adopts these same 10 shared principles as their own and thereby adds its name to the historic agreement between the Illinois NAACP and the IL ACP. These are the 10 shared principles. Number one, we value the life of every person and consider life to be the highest, of the highest value. Number two, all persons should be treated with dignity and respect. This is another foundational value. Number three, we reject discrimination towards any person that is based on race, ethnicity, religion, color, nationality, immigrant status, sexual orientation, gender, disability or familial status. We endorse the six pillars in the report of the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing. The first pillar is to build and rebuild trust through procedural justice, transparency, accountability and honest recognition of past and present obstacles. We endorse the four pillars of procedural justice, which are fairness, voice, which is i.e. an opportunity for citizens and police to believe that they are heard, transparency and impartiality. Number six, we endorse the values inherent in community policing, which includes community partnerships involving law enforcement, engagement of police officers with residents outside of interactions specific to enforcement of laws and problem solving that is collaborative and not one-sided. We believe that develop, this is number seven, we believe that developing strong, ongoing relationships between law enforcement and community. We believe that developing strong, ongoing relationships between law enforcement and communities of color at the leadership level and street level will be the keys to diminishing and eliminating racial tension. Number eight, we believe that law enforcement and community leaders, leaders have a mutual responsibility to encourage all citizens to gain a better understanding and knowledge of the laws to assist them in their actions with law enforcement officers. Number nine, we support diversity in police departments and in the law enforcement profession. Law enforcement and communities have a mutual responsibility and should work together to make a concerted effort to recruit diverse police departments. And I'll also say with that, I'll read number 10 here in a second, but we are looking into our recruitment strategies and we are developing a team and a committee that's going to be focusing on recruitment specifically. Number 10, we believe de-escalation training should be required to ensure the safety of community members and officers. We endorse using de-escalation tactics to reduce the potential for confrontations that endanger law enforcement officers and community members and the principle that human life should be taken only as a last resort. With that, I would recommend, uh, a motion to approve Resolution 23-029-R at the Joint Committee of the whole meeting tonight and then have this item placed on the city council agenda meeting for Monday, February 20th, 2023.
Second?
Motion by Lehman, second by Malley. Any other comments? Mark?
Chief, I just want to applaud you for bringing this, um, forward. I think this is, this is fantastic and I'm very happy to see this. I think we're fortunate in the community we're in that we, we haven't had some of the challenges that other communities face. That being said though, in, in my six years, I'm not aware of, of a single instance that we've been, this been brought forward to us that there's a challenge or an issue, a negative issue, yet I see on a regular basis, letters from the community, applauding the, um, the behavior of, of the police department and the, and the good things that you guys have done. So it's all I've ever seen is positive things. So it's another thing you mentioned earlier, being intentional about it. And so we all kind of have values in our, in our heads all the time. But if you don't put that as an intention that this is the way I'm going to live, this is the way I'm going to do my job, then you forget about it. Putting it out in front of everybody and saying, this is how we police is really important. And I really appreciate you guys bringing it forward.
Absolutely. And again, I think this is something, even thinking of, you know, the, the, the people that walk in my shoes before me. This has been something that's been building for as long as I've worked here for almost 25 years. And, uh, so this isn't, you know, some idea that I came up with. I mean, uh, I'm just carrying a torch now at this point and I'm, I'm very proud to have a team of people, 54 people, including the civilians that work in our department that, uh, I think are, they believe in exactly what we're trying to do here. And, uh, it makes me proud to, to work for the city. And, uh, and I'll even say this, it's not even just within the police department. Working with our city staff and, and other department heads, there's, in this city, there's this collaboration that goes on between departments that, I mean, I don't have experience elsewhere, but I can't imagine a better place to work. There's just cooperation and collaboration amongst everybody and that's how we get stuff done. So.
I've lived here for eight years now and I will say that, I haven't said it underneath, underneath your, your leadership, but this, the police department in Batavia is, is definitely one that I, I think is a model of what other police departments around the country should look towards to, to be, to be part of. It has been amazing to, to see, um, all the officers in, in, in the offices over here, out on the streets and everywhere around town, just be community members all around town. To be part of the community, to be in there with kids, to be, um, in there with adults, to be in there with seniors, just everywhere doing, doing the work that is, is, is something that, you know, people trust. And you said that, you know, before these things came, um, came to, came to you guys, you guys were already doing them. And I saw that from day one, me, well, myself and my family moving here. And it's been great to, to watch the growth and now the torch is passed to you and all the other officers, within this, within your department. It's been, it's been great and I, I continue and I, I would, I love working and watching you guys work all the time. And I, again, I would love to see the model of this police department and you guys' leadership expand and, and, and see it grow in other departments all around the world and country.
Roll call please.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi? Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Seron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado? Beck?
Aye.
Connolly? Chanset?
Aye.
Safa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Motion carry 12-0.
Next is Resolution 23-12-R, authorizing purchase of 11 G-Tec VRX20 in-car video cameras for $66,100. Chief, Yor?
Thank you. Uh, so this, um, uh, is part of our ongoing program as far as, um, uh, transparency is concerned. As well as, uh, we think this is going to aid in prosecution of cases for our state's attorney's office and, and city attorney as well. As well as training, uh, we have found in using the body worn camera products that we currently have, that they've been an excellent training tool for our officers to be able to go back and look at an incident and, and really kind of pick apart, you know, what went well and what, you know, could be improved. So, um, looking forward to adding, uh, hopefully adding this, uh, um, the in-car systems to, to our repertoire, being able to help cases with prosecution, again, build trust through transparency and, uh, and training. So as I'd mentioned, we do currently use G-Tec for our body worn camera program. We also have their tablets in our cars right now, which we've had in our cars for probably 10 plus years at this point. It's been a good product for us to use. It just makes sense at this point to stick with, uh, G-Tec. It's going to integrate with the software that we're currently using. The cloud storage, uh, actually under this agreement will, uh, increase to unlimited for both of our body worn camera, footage, uh, cameras as well as with the in-car cameras. We currently don't have that, um, for our body worn cameras. And I'm told that we frequently go over the amount of storage we're supposed to have. We haven't been charged, but with this agreement, uh, they're going to help our, uh, our cloud storage to unlimited. So I think that's a, a positive thing as well. I don't know if anybody else has any further questions on this. This actually is, I should mention, it's, uh, forward facing inside of, uh, the, the dash. So it's, it's showing, uh, what the, uh, you know, the direction the car is going, facing forward. And then there are also cameras that are located in the backseat that would show, um, somebody that we were either transporting or somebody that we had in custody, uh, which, which could be useful as well. We've had circumstances in the past where people have left evidence behind, uh, or, you know, have done something in the backseat that, um, I don't know. So. The other thing I'll mention actually real quick, uh, so this would be a three, basically a three-year agreement. We had a five-year agreement with the body worn cameras. We're at about 22 months or so right now. So this would, uh, extend till the end of that five-year contract. So the body worn camera and the in-car camera contracts would be expiring at the same time. And it'll give us an opportunity then to evaluate G-Tec as a product and see if that's, you know, who we want to continue forward with or, you know, see what's out on the market.
Yeah, I, I fully support it. I think it makes a lot of sense to go with G-Tec, uh, you know, have it all integrated. So, but the, the one question I have is just technical, do we need a separate motion to, for waiving formal bidding?
We can do that at the city council.
We usually do that at, at just a city council meeting when it's an actual approval on it.
I think it's, uh, very wise to, what you're proposing here and it's under budget. So.
I was going to mention that too. I, I like that when it's under budget.
The last thing I'd like to mention is, uh, Deputy Chief Johnson, who is still here, still behind me. He, uh, he's the one that put all the work in on this, uh, you know, doing the research and his communications with G-Tec. So I'm just going to thank him as well.
And they've been good company work with and all the equipment you guys have had. You really haven't had any issues with anything, the body worn stuff or any of that?
So the hardware has been fantastic. We've not lost any footage. Everything has been there that we need. My only, uh, concern is actually on our records end as far as, uh, when we get FOIA requests, the redaction process, the redaction tools on that end are slow. They're working on trying to improve that, but I think the hardware end is obviously more important. We're not losing any body worn camera footage and the products are very easy to use. So it's not the Cadillac out there on the market, but it's a, it's, it's really solid and I've, you know, I've been happy with it.
I would say, you know, as long as we're getting the footage we need to be able to provide, you know, whatever assistance we have to for the state's attorney so that they can prosecute, I think, or we can make sure that we're doing the right things when we're out at scenes. I think that's the best part to me is that it's a good recording and we can use it. Yeah.
Sorry if I missed this along the way, but how many cars do we have on patrol, on patrol at a time?
We have 11 cars in the fleet. That's pretty rare that we'd have 11 that are out and about. Anywhere on average between, uh, four on the low end to, there are some days where we have upwards of eight or nine. But generally the, kind of the sweet spot is between four and seven.
There are no other questions. I will make the motion that we recommend a council resolution, uh, 23-12-R, authorizing purchase of 11 G-Tec VRX20 in-car video cameras for $66,100. Motion by Wolf, second by Malley, roll call please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Seron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Chanset? Chanset? Safa?
Aye.
Motion carry 12-0.
Um, up next would be Resolution 23-26-R, awarding downtown improvement grant to Geneva Winery at 5 to 9 Randall Road.
Evening, council. Very excited to always announce new businesses into the Batavia fold. Tonight we have Geneva Winery. Uh, they will be locating at 5 through 9 North River Street. So what they will be doing with this grant, uh, is construction for interior remodeling, removing walls and moving doors, updating plumbing and building a wine bar in addition to so many other operations that is outlined in detail in their application. Just a little bit of history with Geneva Winery and, you know, being a business that focuses on strategy, doing research and their due diligence, despite issues such as the pandemic, just to share this. Their first winery was opened in September of 2020 during a pandemic in Geneva, Illinois. Sales have grown since their opening, which is wonderful, considering that being a time of, uh, struggle and uncertainty. Geneva Winery credits their success to their great location and outdoor seating. According to Geneva Winery, Batavia's location, 5 through 9 North River, fits their business model appropriately, which makes it for an outstanding, uh, fit for the community. This project, they will be basically looking to spend at the minimum $60,000 to really develop and bring that business model to life as they have done in Geneva. Tonight, staff recommends that city council approve Resolution 23-026-R, awarding a downtown improvement grant to Geneva Winery in amount of $25,000 or of the 50% of the total project cost, whichever is lesser. Tonight, I'm happy to announce that we have Brent in the audience, who can come up and speak tonight a little bit more about how he's going to be using the grant, and a little bit more about his business and what they do for both the public and city council. Brent?
Hello, uh, my name's Brent Hopstead. I am the sole owner of Geneva Winery. I started baking wine at my house in 2014 as a little hobby. Got to a point where all my friends were stealing all my wine. I couldn't keep it in stock, so I ventured out and I started a little, uh, winery in Geneva. I was a marketing executive, that's my background. And, uh, my hobby kind of grew, um, pretty well. And, uh, so we had a great couple of years in Geneva and we were approached to come over to Batavia. After about a month of saying no, I finally came over here, um, checked out the space, spent some time, uh, around the restaurants and visiting some of the places in, in Batavia. I've driven through here several times on Saturdays and, uh, it's pretty busy. But, uh, I think, um, Batavia is right on the cusp of just exploding, um, in growth over on, on Main Street. Uh, and I'm really excited about that. And the location where we're opening at, uh, 5 to 9, uh, 579 North River Street is just ideal. You know, with the river is just amazing. I'm surprised not more businesses are developing on the river because it's just beautiful out there. And then with the front of it on the main street. So I wish 60,000 was all we were investing. I'm way over that now. So, but what we're doing is we're, we're just really revamping the, in, toll interior. Uh, we're redoing all the plumbing, um, you know, all the lighting fixtures, uh, and just a lot of cosmetic stuff. So we're really trying to create something special, um, and, uh, we hope you guys like it. So, uh, if you guys have any questions?
Forward to it.
One thing I get asked a lot is, are we going to change the name to Batavia Wine? I would love to say yes, but there's a, a lot of loopholes or, you know, that we'd have to jump through, but no, we're Stange, Geneva Wine.
But you do have a Bulldog Wine, don't you?
We have a Bulldog, we have a Batavia, we got a River Street and a Windmill City Wine.
Anybody else have any questions or any comments? Not that I'll make the motion that we, uh, recommend a council Resolution 23-26-R, awarding a downtown improvement grant to Geneva Winery at 5 to 9, uh, River Street, for an amount not to exceed $25,000. Motion by Wolf, second by Lehman. Roll call please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Seron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Safa?
Aye.
Motion carry 12-0.
Thank you, council. And just, uh, make mention, on the agenda, we do have 5 through 9 North Randall Road.
I scratched that out now, so now it says River Street.
Yeah, we'll make sure it's corrected.
I'll make sure I get that right when it gets to council.
Awesome.
And will that be on the next council agenda?
Yes.
So if you'd like to show up at the next council agenda, if you'd like to come and talk a little bit more about the business, when you think you're going to open, that type of stuff, so we can give you a little publicity on that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, council.
All right, up next is Ordinance 2305, uh, mending the zoning code, Batavia city code, Title 10.
All right, ready when everybody else is. So Ordinance 23-05 would revise, uh, the zoning code in several sections, um, as proposed by staff. The, uh, first section would be, uh, would be prohibiting chain link fences in the front setback area of the parks and open space and the public facilities and institutional, uh, zoning districts. The second proposed change prohibits chain link fencing in the rear setback area of a double frontage lot. And then the third proposed change, um, it's a little bit more complex on this one, will be some, uh, modifications in the downtown mixed use fencing. The zoning code currently allows for fencing in the DMU, um, up to eight feet in height and that actually can be up to the property line. And as there's no traditional, uh, setback areas in the downtown mixed used area, staff is proposing that we utilize the minimum and maximum, um, building setback lines, which is between zero and 10 feet, uh, the minimum being zero and the maximum being 10 feet, um, as a measurement to, um, regulate fence height. So from that, staff is proposing, uh, that we allow a maximum of three feet in height for a solid faced, uh, fence. And then, um, staff had proposed originally up to six foot, um, in height for an open face fence. And then staff had proposed originally up to six foot in height for an open face fence when it falls between that zero and 10 feet from the property line on the front and corner side areas. The plant commission did make a recommendation that it be a maximum of four feet for an open face fence. So that is a change from what staff originally did recommend. And if the council feels, you know, that there's an opportunity to discuss that, they can, if they feel strongly on that, for a different height. The fourth proposed change to the zoning code would modify the existing brewery use classification to include distillery as a use. Currently, the zoning code does not clearly define distilleries and staff has received several inquiries over the past year about distilleries. So we're looking at simplifying that process from a zoning standpoint to clearly allow those uses in the same zoning districts that breweries are allowed, either permitted through, by right or through a conditional use. I want to note that that does clear up the zoning process, but there may be additional requirements on the liquor licensing standpoint that will be required. And then the fifth proposed change is more of a clerical change, but we are proposing that the authorized position when reviewing outdoor storage for businesses is changed from the fire marshal to the fire chief or their designee. In absences in the position for the fire marshal, this clearly allows the fire chief to designate other staff members to review it. Recently, you know, our fire marshal was promoted and that technically did create a vacancy in the fire marshal position. So while he was still reviewing it, he was not technically the fire marshal on paper. So it's just cleaning up the zoning code to align with other areas.
First of all, I don't think I can vote on this because I have a double frontage lot, so I'd like to understand a little bit more about the chain link fence and what those distances are because I'm just struggling to read it through here.
Mark, technically yours is not a double frontage lot.
Really?
Because you have the spite strip.
Oh, because of spite strip? Great. That finally benefited me is what you're trying to tell me?
We're giving you the exemption.
Well, that solves that little part, but yeah, so.
Now we can vote, so.
Essentially, staff views, you know, a double frontage lot is where, you know, both the front and the rear of your property could be treated both as a front. We already prohibit chain link fences in the front setback area of a house, so staff feels that it's appropriate to prohibit chain link fences on a double frontage lot in the rear setback as it does face, you know, the street frontage, essentially, you know, making it compliant with the residential properties across the way. So it would still have the existing setback requirements and I, forgive me, each, you know, residential zoning district has a slightly different rear setback area, but it would be compliant with that. It would just be a prohibition of chain link fence material. All other fencing material in the setbacks for the residential zoning districts would still be in compliance.
Okay, yeah, I can just see that as people coming for variances on that because if I were to look at mine, I don't think most people even realize that there's a fence there just because of the, it's heavily wooded and stuff, so nobody would really, so I think we'll probably just end up with variances on that. I get the point of it, but I can see people saying, well, why not? It's a wooded lot kind of thing. So just something to keep in mind.
I have a question. So with these changes, in particular, the DMU fencing, is there any, if we implemented this, would it impact any current situations?
The only situation that I'm aware of that it potentially could create down the road for, you know, replacement would be the Mill Creek daycare that's at the former bank property up off of Batavia, South Batavia Avenue. Forgive me, I don't know the intersection off the top of my head, Main Street. I believe their fence would fall within that zero to 10 foot range and I believe it's a six foot solid fence. However, they still would be allowed to have a six foot solid fence if they are outside of that 10 foot setback, if that makes sense. So the goal of staff is to reduce visual obstructions essentially on these, on frontage and corner side areas. You know, in many cases, that actually would be conflicting with our side triangle requirements if we allowed a fence up to that area. And, you know, in some cases, there's drive aisles, alleys and other things that with it being a fence, we can control that. So it would increase pedestrian safety in our downtown district essentially is the ultimate goal.
Okay, so if, I guess my question is if approving this, would they have to alter their?
As it's a part of the zoning code, they will not have to alter the existing fence. If they were to, you know, it's a rather new fence, so if they were to submit for a new building permit at that time, they would have to come up to compliance.
Would, sticking with the child daycare there, would they be able to apply for a variance in terms of with like them having kids, not wanting to be seen from the street and weird people?
Yeah, given the fact that it is a daycare and the state does impose certain regulations on daycares, they would most likely meet the findings of fact for a variance so that they would have that right to request one from the city.
Technically, as it is now, that could be a 10 foot fence there?
It could be.
Or eight foot?
Maximum of eight foot fence and that's something that staff feels, you know, on the front and the corner sides would be rather, you know, inappropriate.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, we do recognize and it is in the packet that was provided to you that in certain cases, an eight foot fence still is appropriate and, you know, we're recommending that it be allowed in those instances where basically if the DMU is adjacent to a residentially zoned property, a good example is up on the hill of Houston, the gas station, the adjacent, there could be an eight foot fence to screen that from the adjacent property. That would be the only instance that an eight foot fence that staff, you know, kind of feels is appropriate, but otherwise in the downtown mixed-use district, we are proposing that a six foot maximum is the fence, I believe, in the side in the rear.
But the planning said it was there at four foot.
Sorry, I missed that.
But the plant commission is at four foot?
Yeah, well, for the front in the corner, that, yeah, for an open face. The plant commission was fine with the side in the rear heights, but for the front in the corner, that they recommended a maximum of four feet in height. And that's where staff did offer originally to the plant commission the opportunity for up to a six footed open face. I do have an example of that style of fencing. If you'd like to see it, I can pull it up for what an open face is considered, if that helps for anybody on the council.
Yeah, I think I have a pretty good idea myself.
So I just pulled some existing photos. The bottom photo is an open face fence that's actually behind the Walgreens building and that's kind of wraps around by the parking lot that's across from Sturdy Shelter. That is what we consider an open face. It's basically essentially more than 50% of it, you know, you can see through in opacity. The combination on the one above that's in front of McDonald's, you know, when discussing with the plant commission, they asked about this area and how that would be treated, you know, staff viewed it as, you know, they could have up to three feet as a solid and then the additional foot could be open like this in their interpretation for the four feet. So, you know, this is kind of what staff is looking to have in the downtown district, you know, just making it more visible, but also, you know, these walls and these closed fences at this lower level are rather aesthetically pleasing.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, I'll make the motion that we recommend to council then, ordinance 2305, amending the zoning code, Batavia City Code, Title 10.
Second.
By Wolf, second by Soffa. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Motion carry 12-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, up next is resolution 23-22-R approving intergovernmental agreement with Fermi Research Alliance LLC and the Department of Energy Fermi Site Office for Public Water Service. Gary?
The city of Batavia is what's considered by the state of Illinois to be a public water supplier. Basically, we're a water utility that supplies water to the public. Fermi is also a public water supplier, so they are also a water utility and a lot of people probably wouldn't realize that when we started these conversations, we didn't realize that. Fermi is going to be building a new security and welcome center at their Pine Street entrance and they had approached us to supply that welcome center with water. They had wanted a long service from Kirk Road. City had staff had concerns related to maintenance and water quality in that service. Originally, in our discussions, the service was going to remain property of the city, but Fermi wouldn't let us come on their property to maintain it. So we went back and forth several times until the light bulb came on that with Fermi being a public water supplier, we can simply supply them water and then all that infrastructure will be theirs. And then the demarcation line becomes clear and all we do is sell them water and they take care of everything else. And that's what we've agreed to in this IGA. We will have a demarcation point on the west side of Kirk Road at Pine Street and then all infrastructure east of that demarcation point will be Fermi's to own and maintain and they'll be responsible for water quality issues. Our responsibility is to provide them with quality water at the point of demarcation. And so we are recommending resolution 23-022 to approve the intergovernmental agreement.
No move.
Second. Okay, second by Malay, second by, you got Chris Soffa. Roll call, please.
Malay?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Motion carry 12-0.
All right, thank you. Next is item 14, which is resolution 23-37-R authorizing execution of a notice to award to Brant Excavating Incorporated for lead service line replacement project.
Skip 14, skip one.
Did I?
Yeah, you skipped the discussion of the trailer and semi-trailer.
No, I'm on 14 right now.
Ours is different than online discussion.
Are they backwards online? They are.
They're flipped on the paper.
I don't know, somebody did that and it wasn't me. I don't get paid to write agendas. Okay, well, you know what, we'll just, let's just take this one right now and just finish this one. The lead service line.
Sure.
Replacement, we'll do that one first. Keep Gary up there.
Yeah.
This is good news, obviously. Jeremy, Jeremy has really led the charge on this from the very beginning. We've told you several times of the possibility and then finally of the confirmation that the city has received close to $4 million of principal forgiveness loan money from the state of Illinois for lead water service replacements. We are now to that point where we are going to be awarding a contract for a contractor to come in and actually do the replacement work. And again, this will all be reimbursed by the state, a principal forgiveness essentially is how it will work. So staff's recommending authorizing execution of a notice of award and award of contract to Brant Excavating for the lead service line replacement project in the amount of $3,426,389. And then I just, if you recall, I just said a few moments ago, it's close to $4 million is our principal forgiveness loan, but the balance there will come from engineering, design engineering, reimbursement of construction, design costs, so all of the other costs that have gone into creation of the program, so.
Still $3 million or $3.5 million worth of line replacements. So I think that's phenomenal that we're getting that done, that it's moved forward to me this quick. I mean, when you look at other places in the country that haven't even touched what they know is a disaster and we're getting ahead of it.
I'll give kudos to engineering enterprises too. They are the ones who tipped us off to the program from the beginning and so, yeah, those are the folks who deserve all the credit.
Great companies, you get great results.
Exactly.
Excellent. Okay, anybody care to make a motion on this one?
No move.
Second. By Beck, second by Soffa. Roll call, please.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly? Chanset?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Motion carry 12-0.
Thank you. And now on to the discussion on trailer and semi-trailer licensing, storage tax and site regulations. Wolf, Tom?
We have been, well, called inundated with trailers, parking and maintenance facilities requests this last year and while we haven't gotten to permitting issue, permitting any of them actually yet, there's one that's, you know, on the brink. We are still going through some zoning approvals of some of them, but we've had over half a dozen of different requests to either just truck parking, truck parking with a very small maintenance building, but it's primarily truck parking and, you know, a, you know, not any type of warehousing use. So we started looking at this and, you know, trying to figure out what to do with them because, you know, they are permitted use right now under our zoning code, but they don't really generate anything other than truck traffic. There's a very small building, so there really won't be any property tax. And so we started looking to see what other communities are doing in regards to this and we found that there are few communities that actually charge a tax on them, fee for them based on the trailers, the number of trailers that are being used in and out, that type of thing. So there are a couple of different ordinances. Chicago Heights had one and the one we found that was probably most relevant was Bartlett. Bartlett has a tax and right now it is $300 per trailer per year and then it will escalate to $500 per trailer per year, I think in 2025. The $500 was also in, I believe, the West Chicago or the Chicago Heights ordinance as well. So that's kind of typical and I think what they're trying to do is, you know, either discourage just solely the truck facilities. I mean, warehousing has been a benefit to the community for jobs and other things that have been associated with that, but the facilities that are doing just trailers really doesn't really generate a lot of benefit to the community other than just bringing truck traffic in and out and sometimes they can be unsightly, that type of thing. So we are just, you know, floating this idea to you to see if this is something that you're interested in doing. Like I said, with the number of, you know, interested parties that have been wanting to do this, we're probably looking at, you know, half a dozen different properties. Want to note that does not, we would not intend to have this tax applied to businesses that are having their own trucks like Suncast and Aldi. That is not our intention. This would be just facilities that solely are doing truck traffic in and out that aren't doing any type of warehousing associated with that business. So we just wanted to float the idea with you and see if this is something that you're interested in doing. We do have an ordinance prepared for it because we just wanted to, you know, talk about it first and see if we want to go in that direction or not.
Otz?
How about for a, like a construction yard where they're storing their trucks and...
If it was associated with the construction business, then no.
Okay.
Yeah, it would not be associated with that.
There's quite a few of those around here.
That is something that we are probably going to be coming to you as part of some other self-storage discussions later on and whether or not we want to create a tax that's similar to that, not the same as this, but it would be something related to that and would probably be more based on gross receipts and something, something to that effect. But that is something we are talking about internally, we just weren't ready to present the idea to you yet.
I've noticed several of these truck lots. My mom lives west out here off of 34 and there are several places out there that were former farms that literally are just a gravel lot now and they got 25 trucks parked on it because they're trying to find a place to put the trucks just to be able to store them. And they just come up with a lot, they chain link fence it and then they got a little, like you say, even just a little maintenance building that maybe they have a couple of tires in or whatever they're doing there with the trailers and that's what they have on the property. So, I mean, I think these things are going to pop up and how do we handle that, especially if it's in, to me, an industrial park where we really want something else there.
We have, we have one example that is in the process right now. They're, they have about eight acres of prime industrial land and that's what they're proposing is a relatively small building and the rest of it is all trailer storage, so.
I think the timing on this, because we're probably going to see, you know, you're already seeing that much interest in it, we're clearly going to see more.
Right. a relatively small building, and the rest of it is all trailer storage. So.
I think the timing on this, because we're probably going to see, you know, you're already seeing that much interest in it. We're clearly going to see more.
Right.
Abby?
You already know my thoughts about parking in general, and thank you for bringing this up and getting ahead of it. I would be in total support of taxes and fees that are the most discouraging that we can be, just because I know even at the max that we would impose, it's not going to cover the wear and tear on our roads, it's not going to cover the safety implications for our roads. Higher and best use of that land could certainly go to something more productive.
Now, one of the questions I have, because I guess I want to make sure, if we look at this, if we look at saying this is an eight acre property, are we going to look at, they're going to have 50 trailers out there, or are we going to look that they could actually get 100 on that property?
We'd look at, yeah, they're required under our code to mark the parking spaces. So they actually have to have a marked accessible spaces.
And they would pay per parking space, not how many trailers they actually have.
Correct, right.
That's one other thing I wanted to say, too, is, you know, that's, I think, maybe one of the things that may discourage some of it, if that's what they actually have to do. Mark?
And despite the fact that fees may not discourage them, because even if you had 100 spots, $300 a spot is really not going to, they're going to make a heck of a lot more money than that. It mentions fencing, now we just went through discussion on fencing. I don't want to see it. I mean, you've, we've talked about my disdain for how South River looks. Don't want to see that anywhere, certainly not along South River. So I would, whatever we have to say from an ordinance standpoint, that if it happens, that it's not visible. So I don't know, then now we start to run into conflicts of, well, we just said we can't have this guy's fence.
Right. We do require fence, we do require fencing for these because they are not considered vehicles, per se. They are roadworthy, but they are not considered vehicles, so we consider them storage as opposed to vehicles.
And I know that there's on South River, there's like, it's an RV storage and such, but it's, it's visible.
Right. And I think, I think that one will probably be subject more to our subsequent thing regarding storage generally when we come forward with that.
If we decided, could we just say no to this?
You could, if you want to not allow it as a use, yeah, that's something you could do. And now, we've already got, we already have one that is already in the permitting process, so we wouldn't be able to stop that. We have a few that are in the zoning process, too, so those we might not be able to stop. But if you wanted to prohibit subsequent ones, we'd have to amend the zoning code to address that, but that, certainly that's something you could do.
The maximum price per stall you could, as a municipality, we could charge?
We are home rule, so we could pretty much put whatever you want. So, I mean, we could, we could put a pretty large fee if we wanted to do so. I mean, I've seen some of these trailer places, there's, you know, they're getting 100 to 150, maybe $200 per month, you know, for store, a single storage space. I mean, that's, that's what I've seen in some of these places. So they're making money.
The, in Bartlett, the, how long has that been in place and has it, what staff there say about that? Has it been a deterrent, or has it been a revenue drain generally?
Yeah, it's, it's been in place only for two years, two years, and it's been pretty good because it's, I think they only have one truck storage lot right now. So, yeah. There's, there's one truck storage lot that is near Bartlett that is unincorporated that, you know, there's nothing you can do about it, but, yeah.
We had time, if we imposed a fee, to catch all those that...
We could still do it, yeah. We would do this such that any existing one would be subject to the ordinance, is how we draft it.
I'd say we should do the fee and just monitor it and see what happens. I mean, do we get one, do we get six, do we get 10? You know, at that point, then do we have to talk about, we need to back up and say, we can't let that keep going. I know, he's crying.
Are you able to tell us where the one that's in the process is, right?
The other one that's under construction is on Hagaman Drive, near Pearson. That one's under construction. We have other ones that are in the various permitting stages with one that's on North Redant. There's a vacant lot on North Redant, it's about an acre lot, that that one is applied for a permit. And then we have other ones that are, where the Park District proposed the Recreation Center down on Fox Valley Business Park. We have, we have another one on South River, unfortunately. So there's several of them that have been, you know, kicking around with these, so, yeah.
It's, my father sold semi-trailers his whole life, and he used to tell us, if you got it, it came on a truck. And that's the reality.
And then we have, we have three vacant pieces of land on Hubbard that also are potentially other ones that are out there, too, so.
And I guess if you look at the reality of your, if you were to go up and take a five-mile loop around here and look at all the logistic buildings that are around here, and how many trailers come in and out of this area every day, there's got to be the need for it.
And it's not meant to prohibit if it's a business that is keeping their own trailers. That's, that's not our, what we're looking to do here. We're just trying to do these separate ones where there's storage and there's nothing else going on there.
Yeah, it's a, I would be in support of, of not allowing, of rezoning as not an approved use. Imposing a fee on those that we can't scoop out of the process already, but as much of a reality as that's the way our reality is headed, I'm fine doing everything we can to stem the trend in Batavia at least, and not have that wear and tear on our roads, and not have the safety, and not have the traffic, and not have the emissions, and not have the air quality issues of just more and more, like that's just not in line with the vision I have for Batavia.
Sure.
I agree strongly. I would like to limit it as much as possible. There's better things we can do with our land.
The only caveat on that, I agree to limiting it, wear and tear on the roads and stuff like that. I think that there's in the semi-near future, no pun intended on semi, it's going to shift towards electric semis and probably, and certain hauling, probably mid to long-range hauling and stuff like that, and those companies are going to want to be able to stage trucks and stuff like that. So there may be something that comes along that line that we're just not entirely envisioning right now. I certainly don't want to see it in, gosh, over by Bond Drive and everything, I mean, that is right near homes. So I think we could start to implement something that says not within X amount of residential, not in what we still, I mean, it's gateway areas. I mean, South River Street is a gateway, and I've talked for a long time about cleaning up that gateway. So I think that there's, it's inevitable whether it ends up being a parking lot or a warehouse, that stuff is going to happen in the industrial parks. And, but again, trying to keep it away from our gateways, I think, would be a place to start, because I think that there's potential that from, the mission goes away if somebody says, hey, I've got this business and I'm going to have these electric semi-trucks, and then we could be, they're going to come charge and buy our electricity, thank you.
Right.
We wouldn't want to say no to that. So we got to be careful in that, in that realm.
And that's, and I think that's why we're looking at it, doing it as a fee rather than outright prohibition. We can do it as a conditional use, where we can make a decision, you know, pick and choose which ones we want to allow or not, too, so that can be part of, you know...
I'd like the prohibition around residential within, I don't know, a half a mile. I mean, something that is, I deal with it every single day. I mean, trucks go up and down my road, I know what it's like. So if, I don't wish that upon anybody. I chose where I live, that was my choice, but folks living over there did not choose that in their backyard, and that's an important consideration that we should try and keep that away from them. And then again, along our gateways, I would not want to see it.
It's like you said about sometimes like the trucks, like they get lost in residential neighborhoods. Keep them away from that, there's no, there'd be less of them having to get on those neighborhoods.
Right, right.
And even when we do get to the electric fleets, that's not reducing the traffic, the safety, the wear and tear on our roads. And to, you know, to beat mayor to the point about how the motor fuel tax, and they're not going to be paying as much towards, you know, the maintenance of our roads as well. I'm arguing against electric vehicles right now. I'm just... I'm turning your point.
The one thing you got to remember is the trucks pay by weight.
Ooh, there we go.
I don't think they pay by fuel tax.
Yeah.
I mean, the diesels do, but the truck itself, the trailer, the licensing and everything, I think, is all by weight.
That's good. And also, I don't want them on my roads.
Drones.
Trains.
We'll, we'll put together some, you know, language for you to consider, and we'll start down that process.
What kind of language? So which direction?
Well, I guess that's the question. Do you want, is the consensus a prohibition, or do we want to do it as a conditional use, or?
Exactly, same.
Got a leg to stand on in conditional use.
I mean, you can put conditions to say, you know, you need to have 10-foot screening, or that you can, you have to, you know, have no operations after a certain hour, you know, there are things you can do. Granted, you could also put the setback requirement, say, you know, you can't have any of these within X feet of a residential district, too. So that's, that's also an option.
I think if you want to control where they're at, if we're going to have a lot with any of them, that's what you're going to have to do.
I think time, time would be good, because I don't want somebody driving around the neighborhood at the middle of the night or early, early in the morning.
Right, right.
One trailer's out at 1:00 AM.
I just think our land, our land between the boundaries of Batavia, that's what we're here to make the most responsible use of and steward the best. I know people usually say tax money, but like, the land is what generates the tax money that we also need to steward and be really responsible with. And to your point, this isn't going to generate much, and it's going to be a net loss for the community in terms of what it generates versus what it impairs. And so we're setting the community back for 100 years by letting these types of things go in.
Well, what we could do is we could put together language that starts with the conditional use, and if the council would like to make it a prohibition, when we get in front of the council, then certainly, then that's, that's your prerogative to do that. Unless, unless everybody is agreement on, you know, banning them entirely, then, you know, then we can structure it that way.
That's a good start.
Okay. We'll go that direction. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to project status.
Laura? Okay, I just have a few things to cover. One is an update on the community survey. They are getting a very good response from the control group that they sent the surveys out to. They already have over 850 responses to those surveys, which they characterize as outstanding. It brings us into a 3% margin of error for the responses, which exceeds their target range of 4% to 8%. So it means that we'll get really good data back that we can then utilize for creating our next three-year strategic plan. I also just wanted to point out that as part of the consent agenda today, there were several items that were related to the abatement of the levy of property taxes related to certain debt issuances that we have. And what those represent is that the revenue sources that we identified that were not property taxes were sufficient to pay the payments on that debt. And so that means that we're able to abate the levy of the property taxes that back that up. So that's a very good thing from a financial perspective for the city, and I just wanted to mention that. Engineering has set up two dates to meet with residents from Mahoney Creek with the, our contractor, to discuss the addition of additional green, orange, shrubbery, you know, vegetation on properties to further block the sound and lights coming off of Kirk Road. And so that will be happening in March. And Colony has submitted a proposal to Kane County for a continuation of the bike share program. It's a little more expensive than it has been in the past. For 2023, it's $1,600 per bike, and I guess that would represent that if we were to get 12 bikes, we've got three bike racks. If we put four bikes in each rack, that would be $19,200. In the past, our annual budget for this has been around $12,000. Kane County has reached out to several of the local medical groups, Ascension, Mercy, Advocate, and Northwestern Medical. They all expressed some interest in, you know, possibly sponsoring part, or in maybe all of that cost. So it's, it's a little bit, you know, they just want to gauge our interest in our participation in the program, and so I would ask you if, under the circumstances where we were paying for it, we really don't see much reduction in that based on the revenue sharing part of it, even though Batavia's hubs are among the most used in the entire network. So just trying to gauge your interest in moving forward. Of course, it isn't official until I bring you a contract that you then would approve. Mark?
Do you have statistics that you can share with us? I'd like to know how many times, like, all bikes were in use or stuff like that. Do we have any of that information that...
I have number of rides per month, and that's, that's about it.
They can't give us, like, more granular detail that lets me know that...
It's been one of the things that has been, like, if we have, we say, they ask, where are room for improvement? And it definitely would be on the reporting that we get back on the statistical data for the system, because I don't think Anthony's still here, but he could attest, he was our representative on this last year, and it was number of rides. At first, we were only getting number of rides for the whole system, but eventually we were able to narrow it down to rides from Batavia's hubs. And we can narrow it down to each one of the hubs, but that doesn't tell you how many bikes are in use at any given period of time.
Yeah, I mean, I just struggle because I know that walking and running past them, I didn't often see, I often saw bikes there, so it was hard to know. It's like, how many do I want to pay for if I don't know how many are actually in use?
I would say, one of the things I noted last year was an imbalance, that there seemed to be a lot of bikes that were deposited at the Depot Museum versus deposited in the South Plaza or over at the Larson Becker parking lot. One of the things I can say, because the South Plaza rack is right outside my window, is that there's a ton of activity all the time during fair weather of people stopping by that bike rack, and either they're renting a bike, or they're at least just download, you know, trying to figure out how to rent a bike. Maybe they don't actually rent a bike, but it gets a lot of interest. The other thing I would bring up is now we do have bike rental available through the private company, right? They're Boji Bikes, rents bikes, too, so.
As I recall, when we first started talking about this, they were, they were talking about advertising opportunities on the bikes, but I don't think that's really taken hold.
It hasn't. I, you know, they kind of put it on us to say, go ahead, go out and, and find your own people to advertise, but running a program like that just takes a lot of resources in order to do that. We had talked with Main Street about possibly partnering on that, and we could renew those discussions to see if they would be interested in selling the sponsorships and then sharing revenue from it.
You know, I just thought of that, thinking, you know, that would be a prime opportunity for a Northwestern or a Mida or something.
That's why we're contacting them specifically for that.
Because I look at, it seems like that was part of the business model and made it more enticing at the time, but that didn't come to fruition, and now we're looking at a 60% increase in the cost. It's like, I don't know if that, how sustainable that is, but I think I like the program, and I like the, you know, the idea here, but, you know, maybe get someone with deeper pockets to take advantage of that advertising opportunity.
Alderman Lehman?
I have taken advantage in Batavia of these bikes with my family, so it's nice to have the multiple bikes, because when you're getting, when you're going out with four people, you don't want to go trying to find four bikes at all the different locations. But I've also done it at other riverfronts in other towns, not in Illinois even, and it's just really nice when you show up at a town and you're spending the day there, and you're like, oh, let's, let's rent these bikes, they're right here. Also, when we've done it here in Batavia, every time we've done it, we have people asking us, oh, how's the bike? How easy is it to rent it? How'd you do that? Where'd you pick it up? So maybe we just all need to go out a couple times this summer, and we can be our own advertisement.
I guess from my perspective, I would say I'd like to continue to be part of the conversation. We can make the final decision when we get the contract, but I'd like to pursue whether A couple other things I wanted to mention, human resources for one. Wendy is doing an incredible job with the openings that we have. We've got five different openings at this time. Wendy has set up 19 interviews in the next three weeks, and she makes sure that she's part of every single one of those. So kudos to Wendy for all her hard work on those. Thanks, Wendy. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Any online have any question?
Please, top share so I can make sure.
Do we have any others tonight?
Mark. So, no disrespect, since almost all community development happens to be here tonight. We've talked about this in the past, and I'd like to, if somebody would join me, I'd like to bring it up on the next Community of the Home meeting to have a conversation about bringing in a consultant to maybe help us with some processes, because there, there's still that feeling in the community that we take a long time to get things done, and whether that's a permitting process or a building inspection process, I don't know what it is, but we've talked about this and we just haven't moved, so if we can bring that up.
I will join you.
Thank you. Okay.
All right. Abby.
I had a question that I just didn't think of in time, since Gary is still here. On the Fermilab water arrangement, did they give any indication on what their level of need is for water and what that does to our city's supply?
For now, they're just constructing a welcome center and using a regular, like inch and a half, two-inch service. And they'll ultimately be throttled because we're only going to put an eight-inch pipe there. So they really can't, they can't then supply their entire campus with water from an eight-inch pipe. So then naturally, they're going to be throttled. And we have plenty of capacity. We could supply their whole campus if we wanted to. We have plenty of capacity.
Water.
Just water. Kina.
I'm excited to see the lights on at Culvers. Ready for some ice cream with kids.
Okay, if there are no others, then we will move on. We'll need motion to go in executive session.
Still moved.
Soffa, second by Malay. Call please.
Soffa.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Baron.
Hi.
Lehman.
Hi.
Ayazi.
Hi.
Malay.
Hi.
Yar.
Hi.
Seron.
Hi.
Bogosinger.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Beck.
Hi.
Chanset.